I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the February 3rd council meeting, February 12th work session, and February 20th special meeting.
Move to approve.
So I'm properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for February's meetings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At this time, we have the bids for the demolition project at 301 South Perry Street. First one is from Cots Escavating Plus. Forty thousand seventy-five dollars. Next one is from B&amp;B Construction of Richmond. For a total of thirty-one thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. B&amp;B Construction of Richmond.
B&amp;B?
Yep. Those are the only two.
Those two are correct.
We want to take these under advisement, not right after. Next up, public comments, Heart of Hagerstown. Okay, next we have from Ice Mill, Sarah Corl.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here mostly to answer questions, but also to just sort of give you an overview of where we are and where we're headed with this project. I know you guys have been working on this for a while with Lou and with Mike and his team and Sean. And Sean was really sorry that he couldn't be here tonight. He's at another meeting, but he will be at your next council meeting, so we sort of split the difference. I'm covering this one, he's gonna cover the next one. Tonight, we are asking that we move forward with the first legal steps for the bond ordinance and rate ordinance. So tonight, this is our first reading and introduction of those two ordinances. Our next step would be to publish the public notice of the rate hearing. And then when we come back for the second march meeting, that will be the adoption of the bond ordinance, the public hearing on the rates and charges, and then the adoption of the rates and charges. Essentially, this is a pretty quick timeline. And essentially, that's to meet the bid hold on those bids for a closing of the bond bank on April 3rd. So the two documents tonight, the rate ordinance is based on Sean's rate study, which I believe he presented to you guys after your last meeting. And then the bond ordinance sort of sets the guardrails for the bond issuance. So it sets the maximums for the rate, the maximum rate that would be charged on the bonds. It sets the maximum repayment term and the maximum amounts. With that, I will turn it back over to you guys, and if you have any questions on the actual ordinance.
Any questions at this time?
Do you say it sets the actual bond rate?
It does not. So it sets the maximum amount. So right now, we're seeing rates between four and five percent. This sets the maximum amount at, I believe either six or seven. And then the actual rate sale, yeah, so it sets it at six percent. We don't expect that it will be that high, but we would find out the actual rate on March 12th, when the bond bank board meets.
And that will be prior to final adoption, because we're, what, March 17th?
Correct.
So we'll know what the rate is at that time.
My only question is whether or not we'll know what the final rate is prior to final adoption, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the proposed water increase what Sean gave us? Is that what we're proposing? Do we have the reading of the?
Copy of it.
Yes. Because that's what you're wanting us to adopt tonight, right, or introduce tonight?
Introduce.
John, have you had an opportunity with these ordinances, have you?
I have, yes, Steve. I have no issue with how to prepare it or anything.
But this is not what we're introducing this here, right? I mean, is this the actual introduction? This would this? I'd like to see what we're introducing.
The ordinance is up there. And then the big guy has the bond ordinance.
And this is considered a first reading, so it could be still revised after this. Or doesn't necessarily have to pass on the second reading, but this is just a formality, first reading and introduction.
Don't you think you should have had a full disclosure of what these numbers mean? These are just numbers. So what's those numbers mean to you? What do these numbers mean to you?
I'm not sure what you mean.
That's probably what, if somebody read this, they're just numbers. Should you not put the increase that she was looking at, what these numbers represent? So people can know what these numbers represent versus what they're currently at?
We don't typically do that, largely because when you put it in a newspaper, it's tiny. And the more numbers you put, the more confusing it is.
Well, just one number with a percentage behind it. It can't take that much room.
We can certainly do that if you want.
Well, is that being truly honest with the citizens if you hide that number?
I don't think we're hiding it. If you want to see what the difference is, your current ordinance is available. But I mean, that's a, I mean, that's an easy change to make if that's something you want. We typically just don't try to add anything additional.
I guess it would be, it would take up less room to put the percentage in the paper than to also include the current rate charges, right?
Right.
Then how are they gonna compare? Are you gonna tell them to go to the office and ask for those? I mean, I'm thinking you need to disclose to the citizens what this is actually gonna cost them, don't you, or is that?
This is exactly what the statute requires us to set out, so this is what we do. Our job as bond counsel is to make sure that the law is followed, so this is what the law requires.
Is there anything in the law that says we can't put one percentage increase?
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I can, we can add that, yeah. Julie, I can add that percentage so we can mail out.
Well, that's just my thoughts. There's other people. They might not agree.
I think that adds a level of transparency to it.
Because I'm gonna know what they are too. Moving forward, a percentage increase, and I think it's only favorable to. Especially in the first reading, I think there's people who have opportunity to hear what these rate increases are. And if they want to speak in favor of or against this, they've got time to do so. If we didn't already do it, it's all those numbers present. And most people aren't gonna have the documents that's back in front of us that's still gonna give us the percentage increase.
I believe that person increase should be in the rate study.
So the, oh, so the rate study's gonna be printed also alongside this?
No. Now you would need a whole new newspaper to do that.
Well, I know what it is. But, you know, I think the citizens need to know.
Yeah, from a taxpayer standpoint, I would like to know what my monthly rate increase is going to be. From a public service standpoint, I want to be as transparent about that as I can. So, you know, I don't want to blindside our citizens and then they find out that we're doing this huge percentage of a rate increase, and it looks like we covered that up, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, absolutely. We can add a percentage to the notice. And then if you want tonight, because I know I saw a couple copies of the rate study, you can share what that percentage is. I don't have a copy of the rate study with me.
That's my question. To introduce this tonight, to move it on to the second reading, we need to make them know what the increases are gonna be during this introduction phase.
Sean's recommendation, well, it's not a recommendation. We have to do this for the bonds. Fifty-one percent.
Which, what was the number that was written on that paper that said if your bill was normally this, it would go up to this? There was something on one of those papers that said that. Do you remember what that was, Brian? Is that it there?
It's in here.
I think it'd probably be a little bit more easier for a citizen to sit and say, okay, my bill is usually this, now it's gonna go up to this instead of a percentage increase.
Well, it depends how many gallons you use.
It depends on usage, because some of that is set each month, like the line, the service line, the meters, stuff like that.
There's a minimum amount too.
So if you use just three thousand gallons, it's gonna go, his recommendation, it's gonna go up four dollars and thirty-seven cents plus for your three, to get your water into your house, to your house, your three-quarter inch line, it's gonna go up thirteen dollars and eleven cents. Plus, your meter is gonna go up a dollar ninety-eight cents. And I guess that would be the three, the three, unless you got a sprinkler.
Julie, what's the average usage of a home, do you know, just of a regular residential? How many gallons?
Two or three? I really don't know, but I mean, if it was on the house.
Yeah, you know, a single person, one to two, most couples, I would say it's three, four. I mean, we have a lot that are just three thousand, the basics, but a lot that are four. But we do have a lot of families that are six through ten, so.
So then what increase would they be looking at on that math? Brian, you're a lot better at math than I am. I'll publicly admit that.
Well. Probably their basic water use would go up around six dollars.
Yeah.
And then the rest, so six, thirteen is twenty-nine. Thirty-one bucks.
What the average household will look at, the month increase?
That's three, using three thousand. I would think, I've never been the average, but ours is always four. And we're two, so I don't know.
And that is going to fifty-one percent increase?
Yes, that's what the figures are, fifty-one percent on all those, Donnie.
Well, I mean, at a point, look at your bill, see, and times fifty-one percent, that's the meter increase.
Yeah.
And don't we have a couple industrial customers in the community that use in excess of a million gallons a month?
Not quite, not that high, but not that high.
I thought the usage margin was close to million.
It's, I can't remember what it is. It's definitely hundreds of thousands, but I can't remember all the numbers.
That gets, that gets tough to calculate, because it goes up, your next gallons are cheaper, your next gallons are cheaper. So, you know, the big ones are what's hard. Like Donnie said, you can probably take your normal water bill and times it by fifty-one percent, and add that to it, and that's what you're gonna be. Or that's what the proposed is. Donnie, just so that everybody knows, so to get the bond, to follow, to apply for the bond and get the bond, you have to raise your utilities at the rate that the study shows. So we can't step it up, we can't change it. That's just mandatory to apply for the bond.
One time. Usually, we step it up, alright?
But that study's only good, the study's only good for twenty-five and twenty-six.
Yeah, because they recommend to do it in over than three years.
Yeah.
Chris, for our viewers online, because I'm sure this video will be the one that everyone will watch, and maybe some don't understand exactly the point of this project, can you just give a brief explanation of this project and why it's important?
Sure. We've got an aging water infrastructure that's nearing a hundred years old. A lot of it is anyway. We have a substantial number of leaks, and a large quantity of our water is leaking every day. So, yeah, it's to replace that and upgrade everyone's water lines, yeah, better service.
Well, Chris, you had mentioned once before that if we don't, that's the whole time, there's a possibility of sanction from.
There, correct, there could be, yeah, that's correct.
For excess use or for waste of natural.
Excess water.
That is correct.
Correct, that is correct.
I think part of this fifty-one percent increase is a shock, because we've tried to hold the line so well, and Hagerstown proved everything horrible, and may not have increased throughout the years, as we showed in certain situations with water. And then all of a sudden, now, we're finding out, it's almost like a catch-up period to get us where we need to be.
That's all I had on that question, I'm sorry.
I guess one other sort of recommendation or option. If you wanted to post the rate study, that's, that would be another way to make this as transparent as possible.
But that would take a lot of space then.
Well, I mean, on your, on your website, it would be a very expensive newspaper ad.
Again, this would only be for introduction. We cannot vote on anything this evening. We'd have to wait for the public meeting on the seventeenth to have any discussion on it for the vote. With that, I have a motion introduced, both ordinance number three, twenty-twenty-five, Assurance of the Water Works Revenue Bottoms, and ordinance number two, twenty-twenty-five, the ordinance of many of the rates and charges for the use of services under the Water Works.
And we're gonna make that one correction, right?
To the.
At the percentage.
At the percentage, yep, we can do that.
I'll make a motion introduce it.
Second.
So I'm properly moved and seconded to introduce both ordinance number three, twenty-twenty-five, ordinance number two, twenty-twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next order of business, we have the two bids back that have been reviewed for the Community Crossings Grant. We had milestone paving at a hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars. And we had all-star paving at two hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred two thousand and thirty-seven cents. And John, everything meets?
Yeah, Chris and I looked at it, I think after last meeting, and I think both bids were compliant. And for Chris, probably if he's not already, we'll give you a recommendation, which one he would choose.
Yeah, definite milestone. Yeah, we've worked with milestone, and they were quite a bit cheaper.
I make a motion that we accept the bid for milestone for a hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars to pay the streets that was designated.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, that we approved the bid for milestone for a hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Chris, do you have a timeline when we start working on that?
Oh, I'm, they might give me a timeline then.
And then, just for introduction purposes this evening, we have a water emergency contingency plan. Chris, will you speak on that for a moment, just?
It's something IDIM requires. We do have one, but ours is out of date now at this point, and that just has all the updated contact information, what we would do if there was a water crisis.
We'll have a chance to review that, and then we'll vote on that at our next meeting.
Chris, just one question on the bid to page streets. Is any of those streets that are in that bid, are they streets that's gonna be dug up for the proposed one?
They're not, no, they're not.
John, do you have anything from your desk for us?
Just a brief update. So in April, we'll shoot for having a hearing. The unsafe building hearing authority is part of the council meeting, but on four fifty North Plum. We'll get an update there. I know, Chris, and some of you may have heard, sounds like you got an update from the property manager. Supposedly, he's still finishing the house in Grayson Heights, which was supposed to be done sixty or ninety days ago, I think. And then they would move to four fifty North Plum and start working on that. But I think the council is positioned as we need to keep their feet to the fire. So we'll try to get them in in April, get an update, and then we already had a hearing scheduled in May, so we can hopefully, hopefully we'll see some action in March or April. And then in May, we can stand down, but if not, we're, we're still there and ready to go. Other than that, I don't think I have anything.
Was you able to look up on the, for the planning commission about who can send on the BCA?
Not yet. So, yeah, Brian contacted me last week, and the planning commission, and I think wanna do some, a little bit of, potentially some restructuring there to better represent the citizens, so I need to do some more research on that, what the BCA structure would look like, and who filled those roles, and all of that, so. To be determined, so, sorry about that, I'll get on that.
I think that we have Parks and Recreation report.
The park board held their quarterly meeting on the tenth of February. They re-elected their officers again for this year. Sean Lieberman is the president, and Tim Reagan is the vice president. They don't have a secretary at this point, I'm not even sure they need a secretary, but they did not appoint a secretary. The main topic of conversation for that meeting was they are in the works to build a dog park on the property down on Teeter Road, where the soccer field is. They've been in contact with the Boy Scouts, who sound like they might be interested in doing the work as part of an Eagle Scout project. So it's gonna have very little expense to the town. They have not announced a park cleanup date yet. I don't know if they contacted the community, let everybody know. But it's typically one Saturday in around this time of year in March, they get stuff ready for Lululeah. That is basically it. They won't meet again until May 12th. The park superintendent, Light Beeson, did provide everybody with a copy of his annual report for stuff they'd done in 2024, which I gave to Julie, and she made copies, and you all have those, you can review them. That's your review.
Thanks, sir. Police Department, Keith.
You should all have my, finally, my year-end report. Sorry, it took so long. We've been down two officers for months now, so our staffing's been kind of rough. Hoping to get one of the officers back next week, hoping. And then, as you'll see on our report, one, a couple things I just wanted to point out. This was the tenth year for the archery program. We started years ago. At the end of this year, Chris is stepping down, so next year will be the first year that HPD won't actually have someone involved in it, but the program is solid enough, prepared well, that confident now turn it over to the school, that they'll build a, keep building and going with it every year. The turnout for that has been great. One of the other things is always, I always like to point out that in 2024, officers did eleven hundred and forty-two hours of training. We was able to accomplish that on a fifteen hundred dollar training budget, so I'm always very proud of that. We also got, or received fifty-four thousand dollars in grants in '24. And our call volume for the year, we was down just a little bit from the previous year. But do you know, I have any questions about the report from the end of the year?
Keith, if I could just get you to highlight something else.
Yes.
The amount of money that the reserve unit saves the town each month.
Yeah, they, yes, they put in over a thousand hours last, in 2024. And again, with our staffing, it had been really, really rough without all their help. So again, we were blessed to have a very strong core of reserves that's been with us for years. We did recently just lose one of our reserves that was hired by RPD. So we're getting the, his replacement, should be ready, start training here in about three or four weeks. But again, yeah, with, without the reserves, we'd have, we'd have been in a mess, and still would, being down two officers, that leaves just three of us to maintain the twenty-four hour coverage, which, which we have, and, but it has been taxing on everybody. Other than that, that's all that I had, is wanted to update. One last thing on our, our old car, I've been in discussion with Brad Robinson. We're trying to decide right now what would be more beneficial monetary-wise for town, to either send it to an auto auction, or auction it ourself. But we're gonna decide on that real soon, so we either send that off to that auction, or we will do a closed. real soon, so we either send that off to that auction or we will do a, a closed bid, um, like we've done in the past, and if we do go that route, then we'll try to set the, um, the bid opening for the next council meeting on that. We're just trying to figure out which one will, will generate the most interest and, uh, the most money for us and with that vehicle.
If it goes through the, the oil auction, is there any type of commission they would charge off?
It is very, very small.
Okay.
Um, and part of that is because they're doing it for us, I think they're gonna waive a lot of the normal, the normal stuff for that, um, but there is a fee, but it's, it's small. Um, generally, w- we feel like we could probably get a little more out of the car, just opening it up to the public versus sending it through there. Um, Brad's been looking at, doing some research based on mileage, et cetera, we've got, so we'll decide on that here soon, um, get that car, uh, sold one way or the other and off, off the books.
On the topic of reserve officers, I've been following various things in the state, but I know there was a, a bill on that. Do you have any updates?
It, um, I'm of belief that, uh, that change in statute doesn't affect us. Um, generally, the big issue wi- with that bill is, um, for, just for example, there's one community in the state that has like twenty-eight residents, but yet they have sixty-some officers. Um, so the big issue with that is office, the reserve officers doing stuff outside of the county that they're assigned to, that doesn't apply to us. Um, our officers aren't allowed, the reserves aren't allowed to, um, do anything outside of Wayne County. Um, also, all of our reserves, um, you know, have other full-time jobs, et cetera, they're doing it for the right reasons, or a lot of these, uh, towns, um, and departments, uh, that's not the case, so I don't have, if, if that, uh, House bill is passed, it, it won't affect us at all. Um, and our policies, um, are pretty much in line with what the new bill would be anyways. Yep.
Just need to share our thanks to the reserves for, I said, just share our thanks to the reserves for what they've been doing.
Fire Department, Rick.
I hope you guys got the report, I gave you a copy of it up there. February, we finished, uh, down fifteen runs less compared to what we were in January, which was a good thing for us. And you have a list of the runs, what they were. Uh, we continue to work on some changes in the station that we're making over there. Hopefully it'll, uh, be better for our, our station and our department. As most of you know, um, Wayne County's going to eight hundred megahertz system at the end of this year. At the last county's meeting, they gave us an update and they're, hopefully by the end of November, they'll be able to go live. They are waiting on, uh, weather to break, so they can start putting up the towers that they're putting up, so. And I gave you, the county, through the grant, um, is paying for so much radios for the voluntary departments, I gave you a list of what will be re-receiving. These radios are expensive, the problem is, once we have them, they're become ours. If they get lost, get broke, get damaged, it's our responsibility to fix them or replace them. Handheld radio, handheld, uh, it was dual band, you're looking at twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars fees. I do not have a clue what the pagers run, they're going, switching all eight hundred pagers, so, and we'll receive twenty-five of those, so if we add any more, you have people in our department, we'll have to purchase it ourselves. So. That membership, I did interview another candidate, uh, for possible member, um, I will know more about him this week, so. Grants, we're still looking at grant, any grant we can get. Our AFG grant last year was turned down, which was, we were hoping to use that to buy some more eight hundred radios, um, so. FDIC over Indianapolis is, uh, starts in April, first week in April, that's the biggest fire conference in the world. So we plan on sending the guys, right now there's just two, two or three of us that wanna go, so, um, it's, it's really a good, good thing, it brings in, uh, a lot of different, yeah, there's classes you can take, um, we go for the exhibits to see all the new equipment, talk to the vendors and, and see how much cost are gonna be going up on it, everything, so, but it's still a good thing. House Bill twelve thirty-three, which was to eliminate township governments and, uh, turn control of the volunteer departments over to the county, has been pulled by the author, so that's dead. Uh, do not be surprised if you see that again coming out in a different form. They're really, it's my understanding from one of the township trustee I spoke with, that went to a meeting over in Indianapolis, that they're really hot on getting rid of township governments. For some reason, they think the townships are sitting on a huge pool of money and the state wants it, so, which, if you can see our township on what our budget is for our township, I don't know where the pool of money is they're sitting on, because it's not around this area, so. But, uh, yeah, I think eventually it'll happen, so. But, uh, don't be surprised, if you, like I said, you see that come before the legislature again, so.
So I have. Airport report tonight?
Nothing new to report. We had a meeting last week and it was just very simple, nothing going on this time here, so.
Advisory Plan Commission.
So we talked about the alley, I know that was part of, I think at the last council meeting was an alley that they, um, a citizen had requested that we vacate, and I believe we agreed to, um, agree that, that we could do that and recommend approval from the council. Is that right, Ryan?
That's correct.
Correct. Um, which I think you're bringing that up too, right?
Yeah, you're fine.
All right, well, so you're fine.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm crossing stuff off as we go.
Uh, went over some of the work that Tom, our building commissioner's been doing. Um, he is from, at least from hearing from him and Chris, he's doing a phenomenal job, uh, being very fair and consistent with our enforcement of our codes. Um, he's also checking a lot of the different, um, different projects for any sort of safety concerns and stop anything that's unsafe, um, so I, I'd like, you know, to definitely commend him, the, the detail that he provided us at our last meeting was phenomenal. Um, there was a property up on Dalton Road that had requested, uh, variance for a second dwelling, I think we took that that was okay too, it was pretty much property. Scroll up in the notes here. Uh, there was an issue on Main Street, and I think it was at the bank, right?
Yes.
Um, that they, there was an issue with their, you know, I'm not even gonna speak on it, can you explain the issue with the, cause I'll, I'll box it up?
The credit union just around the corner, front and on Main Street, the overhead service dropped, the electrical supply to the building is very low, and it's way below what the recommended standard of twelve feet is, can actually reach up and, and grab hold of it in the first parking stall. I spoke with the credit union's maintenance people in Fort Wayne and he actually emailed me Friday, he's had a health issue the last couple, three weeks, he reminded me that he has not forgotten about the issue and I presume he'll be working on that to resolve that issue shortly.
Awesome, and that is an issue that is a bank problem, not a town problem. Um, and then Tom is also gonna work with our utility department too, to see if there's any other similar issues throughout town that would pose the same problem. I think that's just about it. Uh, you think of anything else?
No, probably, uh, Chris, you need to give us that alley address and, and that was a recommendation to bring towards county, town council to close that alley, so.
So it's the north-south alley between one nineteen and one fifty-one, uh, East Main Street, and so this would be a continuation of the alley that, uh, Chris Conwell had requested vacating, uh, for his broom house, so if you, but it's on the south side of thirty-eight, south side of Main Street.
What was that, one, one nineteen?
Uh, north-south alley between one nineteen and one fifty-one, East Main.
So it would go from Main Street to the cross alley of.
Just that first, uh, just that first half of the block.
Yeah.
Correct, huh?
And that's.
Do we have utilities running down that alley?
We do not, no, I've checked and we do not have utilities running down that alley. That's a, it's a very narrow alley, um, just the, the old house and the block building are just so close together, just a foot or two on either side of the alley, just extremely close.
If we vacant, vacant, then, does that revert them to the, to property owners or is both those properties owned by the same?
You know, the property's owned by the same person right now, so that actually would make it an easier thing to do than if it were two separate owners.
No overhead utilities at all, Chris?
No, uh-uh.
We have no easement issues whatsoever by closing that alley?
Mm-hmm, no.
Any public safety issues from the chief, fire chief or police chief?
Rick?
What do you say?
Do you have any concerns for closing the alley or vacating?
We couldn't get a truck down it. Little alley anyway.
And then what method would we use to, to close that off?
That would be his responsibility, but I think he said he was gonna put up some signs or barricades and have just some temporary, or some parking spaces for one of his buildings right there.
Okay.
I do have a question. I know you guys weren't involved, but, yeah. Couple, about a month or so ago, the people down here came and complained, had some concern about the garage that was being built behind the bank down here. I know several years ago, we had one built a couple streets over here, and at that time, we gave the building commissioner a hard time because probably, um, it didn't go with, apparently with the zoning, the size of that garage and everything. Have you guys drove by this place down here?
Yeah, so I think.
It's huge.
All of us have seen it.
Now, how did that get approved?
I think it, from my understanding, and I don't wanna speak out of term, but it seems like it, it followed whatever the, you know, the variances and all that, and they said it was with it.
That has ran.
Maybe not varied, it's that they followed, followed the, kind of, yeah.
Man, but I don't live by it.
Well, I can tell you, lift heart code from this path, when we need to have a real heart, look heart codes, the path does not meet the standards. That is a big monstrosity of a building in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
I mean, it's what, what, four feet, five feet from that house, and you look out your window, your house, you see a big blue building right there, three.
I believe the house to the east is, does the people that are building it, but I don't know, who owns the house to the west of it?
Five and a half feet.
Wasn't there some drainage questions too, when you build something that large?
I know that's what some of the people in the neighborhood were complaining about, the drainage issue, feeling coming into their house and had hard rain.
Yeah, it's gonna catch a lot of rain on that roof, so it's gonna have, gonna have to have some really good drainage.
So I'm gonna make a comment, it won't be good for town council, but two of them weren't on town council at that time anyhow, so the original, uh, pole structure that was built in the town that Rick was talking about that had concerns at that time, um, plan commission, the advisory plan commission asked town council if they wanted us to address those types of buildings, if they're allowed, not allowed, what they had to look like, and town council did not give us any guidance to work on that, so consequently, uh, that building, well, where it's located, uh, meets the ordinances that it's gotta follow into, so, once again, I'll say the same thing, um, town council will have to give directions what, what they wanna do with, uh, pole structures within the city limits, so that, uh, advisory plan commission can address those ordinances, so. There's, there's other big barn structures or pole barn structures in the town, that's not the only one, there's several of them, and I'm assuming that they'll continue to go up if we don't address it. And I, and I'll state that I was one of those people that sat on the town council on that subject, but I was guilty as charged.
Well, we clearly failed that, we need to move that, uh, move that forward on our list of things to do, because that, we can't continue to let that happen.
Moving back, I need a motion on the abandonment of the alley between one nineteen and one fifty-one, East Main Street.
So. It's okay.
Some properly moved and segmented, the town will vacate the north-south alley between one nineteen and one fifty-one, East Main Street, um, in accordance with recommendations from the plan commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anything further from?
I'm gonna do some of this, Brian, thank you.
Chris, can I make your report?
Okay, our wastewater treatment plant is currently running well, uh, we have a new box, new watering box that arrived, uh, I have reviewed the clarifier drawings, uh, for the walkway around the top of the clarifier, we're gonna put those out for bid, we just had so many other bids and stuff this spring that it's been busy. Um, but I did meet with Center Point Energy about the gas line installation to Dana Lev Station, and they said that it should not cost the town anything, I'm hoping they stick to their word on that. Um, we had an issue out in Grayson Heights where a resident in a rental property was flushing paper towels down, um, into the sewage and clogging up our pipes, and so I had to send a letter, or a letter to the property owner and, um, told them we can't permit that again, but we're gonna have to find them, so we've had that happen a couple times now. Um, Water Department, I did call, uh, a couple references on Indian Earthworks, one was Carol Weaver, she's Lee Santil's clerk treasurer, and she highly recommended Indian Earthworks, um, said they weren't able to stay on budget, they did have them do some extra things, but as far as number to number, went apples to apples, they were on budget with the project. Um, I also called the mayor of Hartford City and he said the similar thing about, the same thing about Indian Earthworks, uh, highly recommended them, said they actually, in their situation went above and beyond what they were paid to do, so, those were two good recommendations. Um, and of course Scott was the low, um, Indian Earthworks was the low bidder on the water project. Uh, also, since we had our last council meeting, we hired American Lake Protection, uh, they went around town and were able to have really sophisticated equipment to detect eight water, major water leaks, um, something that's really interesting about the report, I don't remember if I mailed this out to you or not, but something that's really interesting about the report is that they can tell you approximately how many gallons they think each leak is wasting, and from those eight leaks, they came up with, they think that we have an annual leak of forty-three million, four hundred and ninety, um, gallons through just these lakes, eight lakes that they were able to detect, and so they came through on, um, I think it's February fourth, and since then, we've been able to repair five of those leaks, so if we can get, um, all eight of those repaired, and you know, like I've said about the water, when you repair one, another one starts, but if we can get all those repaired, that will be a little bit over half of our, uh, leaking consumption, of our consumption that, um, we're not, is unaccounted for, so that would be great if we could get that repaired and it would actually stay that way. Our electric department, we do have an electric, uh, bucket truck, a demo truck, that's gonna be coming here in a couple of weeks, and I'll let you all know when it's arriving, you might wanna take a look at that. Um, we're doing tree trimming on Haytai Road, um, we've been having the electric department assist, just trying to get a lot of these leaks that we found, just get those cranked out and repaired as quickly as possible, so the electric department has been working with the water department quite a bit lately. Um, Streets Department, working on ordering road salt for the upcoming year, you have to do that almost a year in advance to get the good price on road salt, so I'm working on that. Um, I did meet with Bob Warner about the railroad crossing project on South Washington Street, and we called in while, while Bob was. I did meet with Bob Warner about the railroad crossing project on South Washington Street, and we called in while Bob was here. We're still trying to have a discussion about that railroad spur, who actually owns that, because our Plan A would be to remove, remove that spur and just pave over that area and be able to replace the storm drains in that area. Plan B is not going to be as pretty cost-wise or anything. I didn't know, Bob, if you want to mention anything about that.
Well, I can't really say much more than that at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, yeah, we'd have to go farther back on the roads to get enough slope, and it would be raising the the spur up so that we can get the slope, so that, I mean, that's the, the problem. The spur is so much lower than the main line at this point, and so.
Have we ever determined who owns that spur?
Railroad says we do.
The railroad says we do, we say we don't. Old drawings show that it went to the elevator that was there, and that was originally, I think, a flour elevator back in 1892. I think it was a flour elevator that were the old flour, bread flour.
But it shows, the drawings also show that it's within their right-of-way.
It's eight-foot either side of the railroad bed, isn't it?
Well, I mean, the spur is within their.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So.
And they have the equipment parked on it as of yesterday, so, yeah.
Charge of rent.
That's right, charge of rent, then we'll find out. So we're trying to work through that. We had to install a new gas heater at the main garage, the old one's about 30 years old. 450 North Plum Street, put plywood over the basement window to try to keep the animals out or in or whatever, we're trying to do with them there. And that's pretty much what I have. Do you have any questions?
I think the only question I had, and I don't think it's being listed here, but at our, one of our meetings that we've, we've had recently, you were talking about like the different water meters that some of them in town probably needed to be replaced. And you said you were going to follow up on that.
It's an ongoing, yeah, that's an ongoing issue. We have a lot of water meters that are, have been replaced or dying now, so it's, we are having trouble getting into a lot of houses, and I think John's looking at that. A lot of people, I apparently have their basements stuffed full of stuff to where we can't even access the water meters that are in there. So I think what we were planning on doing is pretty much giving the homeowners an ultimatum, either you let us in your basement or we're going to install a pit in your front yard, and it's going to cost you $1,000, $1,200 or whatever that number was.
And put a hole in their front yard.
And put a hole in their front yard, that's right, yeah. But I think that's pretty much where we're at on that.
And your ordinances allow all of that, and, you know, essentially with notice, you can get in and read that, but some people have balked and for whatever reason, that won't allow anybody in.
When Luke redid mine, it was, he was in and out in probably 10 minutes. It's a painless process.
Yeah, it's usually a very quick process.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie.
So I got the annual report submitted and gave away, and it's been published in the newspaper for 2024. Courtney has gave her two weeks' notice, so I have, she's at the front desk, so I have a position open for that. I have a couple of interviews this week. And then the AIM Roundtable, which two guys are new, and that is going to be at Welling Red's April 23rd, and one of us, someone needs to go, so we can represent Heather's town.
What time is it?
5:30. If you just let me know.
Good question about that.
Yeah.
Does AIM pay for that?
No. Well, we have to pay. I forget how much it is, 25, 30, but they have sponsors.
You can mark me down for that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any further business?
Yeah. With the market volatility and not knowing what MISO might do, I would like to make a motion that we add another $25,000 to the MISO account to bring a total of $175,000 just so we have a cushion in case something unforeseen happens.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we move $25,000 into the MISO line item under our electrical department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And our next regular council meeting will be Monday, April 7th at 6:30. Everybody have a chance to review the claims as presented?
None to approve.
It's okay.
So properly moved and seconded that we approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion adjourned?
Soon.
Second.
No problems, there's one second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?